Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just to let you know, the moment of silence tonight, obviously, and I think you know that we've lost a dear friend in our bus driver, Kim Frank, and so we'll do a moment of silence for that situation. And also nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-four school board member, Ronald Sparling, just passed away recently. So we'd like to have a moment of silence at this time.
Join me in that, please. Lord Jesus, I'm reminded just here now that in Corinthians you tell us that you're the God of all comfort for all the troubles that we find ourselves in. And I just ask that you come alongside these families and bring comfort. Just as you did back to Mary and Martha, when their brother Lazarus died, and you made that fantastic declaration that you are the resurrection and the life. He who believes in you will live. He who dies, whoever lives and believes in you will never die. And thank you for that. Just come alongside and bring comfort as only you can. Also, as we meet this evening, make decisions as a board, I ask for your wisdom to be involved. Give us insight, help us to see a problem or a situation in three hundred and sixty degrees all the way around. Help us not to be focused on just one direction, but to know all possibilities and make wise choices. These things are praying in your name. Meeting Board meeting September the 12th, September the 26th, and October the 10th, here at six o'clock. Regular meeting title. Revisions of agenda, mostly under donations, I believe, and also HR. There's some additions to that. Recognition. We have a number of donations, and I'll try and make my way through these. We have a $200 donation from Jesse Whiteman, Leela Gilman, Neil Hunter, Robin Hodge, Lisa Krupick, Burke, and Kerry Martin. And that's through Amazon class wish list for Mrs. Heather Clicks, preschool fourth, four-year-old classroom. Also, recommendation, approved $500 donation from the Daughters of the American Revolution for a grant for early childhood education. And this is Heather Clicks, preschool fourth classroom again. We also have recommendation, approved $500 donation from Life Sunny School Class from Bachelor Creek Church at Christ. Now we go towards Metro North. Individual students' needs for supplies, shoes, and meals. Recommendation, approved another $500 donation. This is from Doug Wells, Nikki Holmes, Liz Little, Shade Lauer for Scholastic Books. We also have Doug Wells, Nikki Holmes, Hallie Schuler, Madeline Daisy, Luann Wendell for Floor Puzzles from Mrs. Angie Heron's kindergarten classroom. That's at Metro North. Also, a recommendation to approve $350 donation from Madeline Daisy's. That'll be for books and other supplies there. Approximately $40 of value. Michelle and Tim Shepherd, you can see what they're willing to donate there. And that's valued approximately $310. And that's for Miss Ashley Hunt's first-grade classroom at Metro North Elementary. Then also recommendation to approve $122 donation from Kathy and Steve Kirkland. You can see what they're willing to donate there for supplies for classrooms. That's approximately $95 in value. We have the family of Wyatt Ashley, Wyatt Ashley and Liam Rain. That's for some supplies there also, about $27. And that would be for Mrs. Stacy Meredith's preschool classroom, also at Metro North Elementary. So we appreciate that. I'll need a motion to approve those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Staff spotlight.
Well, I want to first of all say that we are improvising tonight since Metro, Metro debt is down, I think, across the state of Indiana. We don't have internet access, but we do have hotspot. We have different things. So that's why you might see people walk around and do different things tonight. And so for people at home, hopefully you have some kind of access so you can watch our board meeting. So we are going to go ahead, though. This is one of the favorite times of the night as far as a school board meeting when we do spotlights. And this year we're doing something a little bit different. So last year, at the end of the year, we actually did the nominations and selections of our staff spotlight for staff, staff of the year, and also teacher of the year. And so tonight we have with us Principal Amber Lewis, Principal of Southwood, who's going to share some things after I share a little bit. So the staff spotlight for tonight, Southwood and the staff of the year was Katie Davis. So Katie, if you would like to come up. And Dr. Kuhn is going to move our cameras since we don't have our internet access. There we go. And I'm going to read just a couple of things. Once the, once the staff of the year, they actually, to be able to find out who the district staff of the year is, we have them write a narrative. And the narrative is, why, why do you love being a staff member at MSD? And specifically, in this particular case, it would be at Southwood as a paraprofessional. And let me just read what Katie wrote. It says, "I absolutely love working for MSDWC. I've always loved working with children of all ages, but I feel most effective with older students. This past school year as a paraprofessional, I was in eighth grade and ninth grade classrooms the most, and I really bonded with the students. They are a fun age and have great personalities. They can express to you on how they are feeling and what they need the most help with. I always have a good attitude despite what might be going on. The students really like to see me, and I have several that go out of their way to just talk to me, even out in public." And that's really good, because that doesn't always happen. "I can connect with, I, I can connect with most students on every level. I am very flexible when asked to switch my schedule around. I do what I am told, and I don't complain. I've had several jobs over the years, but I can honestly say I look forward to getting up every day just to see the students and my coworkers. I work well with the teachers, helping them assist the students that need help. I'm thankful for my job at MSD because I know I'm making a difference. That makes me feel good, so good, and that is the job for me." So thank you very much for that. And I'll let Mrs. Lewis then share a little bit of information, too.
Mr. Keyfaver really covered it because that was a lot of what I was going to talk about, Katie. I've had the privilege to get to know her this past month or so, and she's just a huge asset. So she spends most of her day pushing into our general education classes to help students with special education needs. But you're going to see her helping all students. So it doesn't matter what, if the student has an accommodation or not, she's there helping them. And that's just huge to watch, just in the ministry, to see that she, she's helping every student that she can. In particular, we have one student that she's been able to make a connection with that nobody else in our school has. And I think that's just a true testament to her character, to her talents for working with students. And it's just a huge blessing to have her at Southwood.
Thank you. And Katie, one thing with our student staff recognition, First Harbor Banking Trust sponsors this for us. And so what we've decided to do is you actually get a $50 voucher for our online store. So you can just use that. And we, thank you very much. Do you have anything you want to say? I didn't really grab on that, but.
I just, I love my job. I like doing what I do and make a difference.
All right. Let's give her a round of applause. And next, we will have, I'm going to bring this up here. This is Amber Deswiler. And she is our teacher of the year for Southwood, but not only for Southwood, but also for the district. And so she actually had to write a lot more. And part of it is, what we do is if they want to move on to the next level as far as the state of Indiana, I try to use the same prompts that they do, and not every prompt, just one prompt. So if they do want to continue on with that, they can. And I'm not going to read everything. It was a very good narrative that she wrote, but I just want to read one paragraph. And here is the description. Describe a project or initiative you've been involved with that deliberately creates culture in your classroom or school. Describe how you build and use relationships to collaborate and to teach students of all backgrounds, abilities, and identities. And so this is actually the paragraph, not, this is just one paragraph that she, that she wrote. Spanish teacher, by the way, too, that people don't know. Because a good teacher creates a safe place for their students. I support an environment that the students can feel comfortable, take risks, and share their lives with others. I tried to create a positive climate in my classroom, and this produces positive relationships with my students. A mutual respect and appreciation between a teacher and their students produces an atmosphere for learning. I believe that my students know that they are an important part of my classroom, and every individual is a unique learner. As a group, they become one family that helps each other and encourages one another in and outside of the classroom. Very good. This is Lewis.
Mrs. Deswiler's in her third year here teaching, and so if you need.
Must have started when you were fifteen.
If you need anybody, like you just spent a few minutes in her classroom, and you just see how amazing she is as a teacher. Like she has mastered the art of reaching all types of students, of making learning fun. If you've ever tried to learn a foreign language, a world language, it's challenging and difficult. It can be intimidating. But she just makes it just such a welcoming, safe environment for her students. And I can speak. You know, now we're working together, but I've had her for three years of Spanish, and so I can speak as a student as well. And she's just an incredible girl lady and incredible educator, too. So I'm very blessed. I told, well, I didn't tell you this, but I don't want her ever to retire. She's going to be very grateful to fill her shoes.
All right. And again, so $50 voucher for something, I'm sure will be Southwood because you're Southwood. Congratulations. Give her a round of applause.
You didn't notice, Mr. Keever, but as you're reading those things, their faces are very red.
They don't like that.
They don't like to hear those nice names. And I did say that they could leave. They're missing out on a lot of good stuff here. But they're, that's the boy thing, so.
Thank you.
For the recognition, the rest of it, just remember I said. Okay, we have a couple of other things tonight. We do have staff and student recognition. And we have a couple from Mr. Martin at Shark Creek Elementary. And he just said, "We wish to recognize, thank the custodian, Mr. Howard Goshard, for his daily dedication to our students in our school building. Thanks to all, for all your hard work and efforts at Shark Creek." Also, thank you to the food service staff members who take such good care of us at Shark Creek. Deb Honeycutt, Carla Dietrich, Randy Rice, Jennifer Willingham, and Amanda Rhodes. All of you do a wonderful job. So again, we do this during the school year. Appreciate them recognizing those people. And I will give the phone back because I don't have a computer, because I can't have a hotspot when I have their Facebook app. Yes, it is.
All right. That's all?
That's all.
Thank you. Public comment on just agenda, agenda items? If not, if you've read through the minutes from prior meeting, I'll get a motion to approve or any changes.
I move to approve those minutes. Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next would be approval of financial reports, beginning with claims.
I did have one question about chalkboards, resurfacing them, chalkboards. Do you ever use them anymore?
Well, they, they put, like, when they resurface them, they're putting the whiteboards over the top of them.
Right. Okay. But I'm sitting there like, are we?
Yeah. So the chalkboard itself is just being used as a placeholder for the whiteboard.
Okay. So when we use, lose internet, we go back to chalk.
One question I had. I move to approve claims.
Second.
Motion is second for approval of claims this evening. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. No opposition. Payroll.
That, this payroll concludes the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pay. And so the next payroll will reflect what will be the report for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That will be the first pay for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I move to accept payroll.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Financial summary. Thomas, there, Chris.
Yeah, I just gave you a snapshot of where we sit with our cash flow and education operations fund. The education fund shows just about everything that we can show for the year except for salary increases for teachers, which we're getting ready to start formal bargaining from the hearing that we did at the last board meeting. We will actually start doing some informal meetings with the teachers association. So that does not include any of that. And then also whenever the APM comes out to be in the fall and any changes that might be reflected for that. And then just operations shows what we're currently doing. It also shows when there are some of the projects that we have been doing, which we've been paying out of the operations fund because we've not received the bond money at this point in time. So we are actually getting started with the bond process. We have an S and P meeting on Monday to get a rating. Then that rating will, you know, help determine kind of what rates we get with that bond. So all those things are happening shortly.
That rating, we, we were approved.
Yeah.
So that doesn't hold. Is reevaluated?
Yeah, it's reevaluated.
Can you anticipate for us to have a super good rating?
I would hope, I would think so, so true.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Be careful on this. Grabbing HR, if you will. This is just simply amazing, beginning of the school year, and we'll have such a short list. That's a great, great thing. And Rose B. Nation, Tim Smith, that's custodian at Shark Creek. And in employment, we have Shannon Peer, Kim Jacobs, and Adam Swiegel. And we can see their positions, if you will. So anything to be said about that, Mr. Keyfaver? Or just go ahead and vote him.
I move to approve HR.
Second.
All in favor of approving HR this evening? Say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. All right. Reports. Hartland, Matt, anything?
Yeah, the, Harlow started out pretty smooth with Mr. Redworth. He's happy. Things have gone smoothly so far for him. So that's always good. They had six hundred and twenty-eight students who, they probably won't stay at that, but they'll stay north of six hundred. So it's a pretty good deal. And that's basically it. Just reminder, in fact, keep thinking about spending money.
When would those decisions be made? Any anticipation?
That's a better question for Mr. Keyfaver, if they can get the other superintendents to wrestle around and agree on stuff. So we're ready to say yes, and bring it to you guys when we got it. And I encourage every board member to bring it to their board and do as I'm doing here, just to say.
And I will say that we are definitely interested in trying to do something to, you know, move, move forward with that. I do know that we have two new superintendents, though, too, that have worked with us, too. So that, that changes some things a little bit, too, just to keep them up to speed. So, and that's it.
Thanks, Matt. Superintendent, report.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, you know, projects continue to progress in the area. Of course, if you're interested in helping with the Southwood Elementary rope, they're still roping. And I think tomorrow and Thursday will be great days to help out. I was saying, people are on the table. And then also the gym floor, really, really close to completion, Mr. Lewis, right?
Very close.
Very, very close. And so hoping to be able to play on that very, very, very soon. So, so that's going to be great. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. IRE?
Yeah, I shared our IRE scores with you. They're not as high as we'd like for them. We'd like to always be just above ninety percent or higher. And we're a little low. However, if you look at us compared to state average, we're still above the state average. And so we are offering, we're discussing the reason behind this. We're offering to support as best we can to help meet those needs. There's been a push for science of reading. That's kind of the new, some new strategies on how to teach that. And so we have invested heavily as a district, I would say, probably close to $100,000 by the time this year is over. We're invested in training and materials for our teachers to use. And so we are, we're exploring on that. And so it's not great, but it's not awful. And it's something that we're looking to try to improve. This, of course, will be, this is the third grade would have been kindergartners for the COVID year. And so they would have been there through March or April, whatever, March, November. And so this is the last group that'll be, that would have been with us to be impacted by COVID shutdown. But we're not looking for excuses. We're, all the students are identified. We're providing those services.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Move on, Matt, to new business. We have five, five items to consider tonight. First one being recommendation to approve social media action suit.
Yeah, I want to go back a little bit. Prior to COVID, we actually were in a, another suit against the Jewel Company and the vaping. And that's still actually progressing. At some point, we figure that there will be some finances that will come to us that we can use some of those finances because of some of the things that happened with students that who vaped and things like that. And so this is very similar to that. And our school attorney actually shared this with me, and I also looked at it and saw it earlier. And so we discussed it and feel like the social media action suit is also appropriate because there are things that happen in our schools. There are students that have discipline issues and different things because of those. It does cause a disruption to the school. They may have to be put into day reporting, different things like that. That does cost the school district the finances, plus it's just not good for their mental health. And so there are schools in our state, in the country, that are, are looking into this. And so my recommendation, but before you do anything, I'll see if Josh would be, want to put anything in here also. I would mention anything that we are part of the social media action suit. It's my understanding that this is not anything that will cost us as a district any cost.
Exactly, Mike. And I think that's the key takeaway, as you and I discussed. I saw no significant downside to doing it. There's no financial commitment on behalf of the district to participate in it. It's very similar to the Jewel lawsuit, which was also done on, was known as a contingency basis. It is a class action suit. So we will be one of many, many parties that I anticipate. And we will, you know, the contingency will most likely be negotiated. But the attorneys will only get paid in the, in the event that the client's getting some sort of a judgment agreed or not.
And so, for example, not that we know exactly what this would be, but for the Jewel civil lawsuit, there, we received some finances. There might be some things that we can do that implement to have more prevention in our schools with vaping subspeak, or also fund some of the things that we have with our day reporting program. So it is my recommendation that you approve this, and we'll sign off on it and send it off if you approve it.
This is a national, nationwide?
That's correct.
Discussion on that?
So what, social media? Are all social media, or who are they suing?
They are, name them all. I think, I know Facebook, Meta, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok. Yeah, that's in number two there. And everything that I've seen, those are kind of the biggest ones that are mentioned and repeated again and again. Quite frankly, I don't know beyond that. What would be a large tech company, but that's what you see there. Let's go.
My two, I don't, I don't remember how, when the Jewel one started. This, we should anticipate probably eighteen months or years.
It was before COVID that the, the Jewel one that we got, there were two different ones that got involved that. We were one of the first ones in this area, and then they brought up another one. I kind of joined that. So ours was attorney out of New York, and so it's been several years ago.
Pretty dedicating it up, sir. Important.
Yeah. You know, to me, the cause of action doesn't immediately jump to the front of my mind, what they might be doing. But the cause of action is a little bit nefarious. To me, they're nebulous-like. I think that they're going to be doing some really good lawyering to come up with exactly how they can bend some sort of liability on the tech companies. But.
Some of it is, too, though, like there's, like Facebook, I'm not going to mention any specifically, I guess I just did, but. That was the first one on the scene. So I don't know what was it looking like. You can see right there. But part of it, too, is just the age of what they do and how they market it towards the different ages and not complying to all the laws and rules of their actual social media platform. So I think that's part of it, too.
I wouldn't say they have a slant-up winner on their hands necessarily, but I would say.
And very difficult.
And I think it's going to, and because of that, I think they think it's longer than the Jewel. I mean, the Jewel's thinking back on years and years of tobacco litigation. This is much more uncharted territory, I would say.
Motion approved, the recommendation, then?
There's a possibility you get something out of it, I suppose.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
I'm not saying anything bad.
And then the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Everybody in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to go on fire right now.
Recommendation to approve the appointment of Valerie Dow to assume the board position currently held by David Dow that expires here in September. That would be for the Rowan Public Library Board of Trustees. And that term within and in 2027.
So, second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Appreciate that. Item three is similar. It's a recommendation to approve the reappointment of Mary Joan McCollum to the Wombash Carnegie Library Board for the term beginning here already began in '23 and runs through '27 also.
So, second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Fourth item, recommendation to approve the extended field trip for Southwood Elementary to Chicago, Illinois. And that would be for the March 14th, coming near 2024, to common trip that they've held.
So. Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you again. The fifth item, recommendation to approve one of the three options for North grades, three through five, as part of strategic plan number four. And as you know, we've had three work sessions to discuss options. And as you know, we've had three work sessions to discuss options and the necessity of doing something, especially with uh the condition of Shark Creek. Uh, so we've spent some time on this in work sessions. Uh, I thought that we should have some discussion tonight and find out each person's thinking on the matter, and then probably ask recommendations from the administrators. Uh, the architect has already kind of expressed himself in the work sessions to say that he probably would not support option one, which is the renovation of Shark Creek, but option two or three, which would be the addition onto Northfield or the addition onto Metro North. Not everybody wants. I'll stop calling.
Well, I I would agree with the architect. I was, from the beginning, I've been probably haven't even thought about renovating Shark Creek, just knowing that it was, we have a lot of per dollar spent, so I don't think that one should even be considered.
I probably should have went ahead and mentioned, just refresh memory, we've got the numbers in front of us, that the anticipated cost of the renovation of Shark Creek was going to be the highest cost of the three, approximately thirty-six million and seven-hundred-thousand something.
I did put it up on the board, so I have all that here.
To complete that, if you want, Mike, then option two was the next highest, the thirty-one million, six hundred and sixty-four, followed by option three, which is a Northfield option, and that's twenty-eight million, three hundred thousand.
We've received some emails.
Yeah.
I know Christian and I, we received a couple other ones besides all of us, but I, I've, I've only received um people that that I've talked to that have been in favor of Northfield expansion. Um, I've received.
So, I, I did have that.
Talking to people. Um, so public input has been that direction. Um, probably from the beginning, that's been the direction I thought that we should, not knowing numbers or dollar amounts, but I don't know. I think it's uh, I think that plan looks better twenty years down the road.
It's kind of the way I, when we first started talking about it, I was kind of leaning towards the Northfield. But then I kind of put the icing on the cake when you heard from some other people and talked to everybody else, and then you see the costs. Yes, that's kind of the way I'm leaning also. But I think we need to tweak maybe that plan. I know nothing is set in stone, but there's been several concerns, you know, with kind of what we're talking about. So I guess going into it, my opinion is if we can make the improvement center, and if we need to do some of Metro North and make it be able to function correctly, I, that's kind of the route I'm looking at right now. Me, Mike, depending on what everybody else thinks.
So you're saying Christian leaned with the Northfield, but yet spent some dollars in Metro North?
Need be, if if we can make it work. I mean, to make it function right, if if the dollars work.
Especially towards the cafeteria.
Yes.
And air conditioning and that.
Yep. I think if we can make those numbers work, that's kind of, I like that idea. I liked it from day one, and then when the numbers come back, it even made myself more favorable.
Myself, I leaned toward the Metro North from the beginning. Still, part of me kind of pushes that way a little bit, just because I like that idea, but that grouping together. But as you look at the dollars and the way this lays out at Northfield and stuff like that, I can see that. And if you do that, then you don't have to worry about the gym at Metro North because you're only second graders. You don't need a full court as such. But you do need to work on the, the lunchroom area. But if we do this in Northfield, I would like to have somewhere in the future to plan to do the, the same thing towards South because Southwood is also, and this has got to be kind of a strategic thing down the road too, to keep that going down the road too.
I agree with that. I mean, this is long-term. We're looking long-term. We're kind of facing the worst, but we're gonna have to go south there. We're gonna have to know that in the future, we're gonna have to do work down there also.
Yeah.
And I think that kind of keeps it looking the same. And plus, we're, as the architects have talked about, usually the, the last, you know, the last thing that goes if you're shrinking is the high school. And you hope we maybe never quit shrinking, and then we could just leave facilities as we we have right now. But um, you know, you could ever predict that part. So I.
Well, I think last year during the uh referendum vote, there was a strong um opinion out there, at least from what I was hearing, that they wanted to maintain two high schools, Southwood and Northfield, which, you know, I'm a South guy, so I was very, very positive about saving a footprint in the South Part of the county. So I agree with your thinking, Matt.
It just has to be planned that way.
Yeah, part of the master plan. The dollars that will eventually be spent on Southwood Elementary. We need to be maybe conservative, but towards something.
Correct.
And, you know, I, and I know that's why the administration wants to get moving because there's, you know, it's, there's always upkeep that you have to have on Shark Creek. And every month and year that goes by, we keep dumping money into there, that ultimately is gonna get buried. And so it's kind of why we need to make a decision of which way we're gonna go.
Thoughts, Jeff, or?
I like the Northfield option. I like the the possibilities. Obviously, the engineers just kind of drew up something kind of generic, more or less, but I think there's a lot of possibilities there in that location.
Mr. Key Favor, Mr. Ken, what's your recommendation? Then, do you have?
Mike and I intend to admit and talk, and so we'll kind of share lots.
Well, first of all, just to kind of go back a little bit, do you want to thank um, you know, Bart, Bart Ko-Villman, Wyman Construction for completing the study and the project budgets. Uh, there's been a lot going on with that, so we can get an idea. And that's what we really want to do. We want to find out an idea of what the options would really be. And so they completed that study this summer, of course. Um, we had had three work sessions. They've all been on Facebook Live, uh with a different camera system than what we have now. Um, but also, if you did not know this, um, we actually have a YouTube channel, and it's also on YouTube for those people that uh like to go onto YouTube and check that out. And again, for North um grades three through five, there were three options. Of course, I know that already they've mentioned, so we'll go with the dollars again. And where the first one was a Shark Creek option renovating. The second was Metro North, and the third one was at the Northfield location. So really, based on several factors, um, it would be uh the recommendation, and I think, and I'll, I'll group us all together, and they can share other information that may, I may not share, um, to approve option number three, but also include part of option number two. So that would be the, the majority of, of course, the three through five um at the Northfield location, which is actually right beside Shark Creek uh right now. Um, and then also, though, a small portion of option number two, which means to look at um adding additional space for cafeteria um at Metro North Elementary, because currently, that's a situation where we have the breakfast and the lunch is um in the gym at the same time. So uh, the students really do not have um locations to have recess, and also it's just a tear down all the time back and forth. And so uh, that would be that reason. Um, I listed a bunch of reasons why uh this would be um the recommendation that we have. It's first of all, least amount of disruption during construction, a least amount of cost of construction, even with um doing things both at Northfield and at Metro North Elementary. Uh, the convenience for mentorships, internships on the same campus, of course, is a, is a positive. Convenience for parents on the same current campus, um, that is one that I've been hearing in different locations of schools that are um have a larger grade span, um even grade spans of pre-K all the way through twelfth grade. Um, also, new facility for the students and staff. That would be everywhere, but yet that's, that's uh obviously a positive. Um, sharing of services, um, there can be some sharing of services if they're in, in that same location. Uh, future possibilities for the campus. Um, and one was already mentioned too, that um option number two and three were really the architects. They would just say that with the current condition and how um Shark Creek was originally built, um, it would be best because of that. So the cost estimate, and I know that's already been put up, uh even with number three and a, and part of two is lower than than option number one. Um, and of course, it was actually eight-point four million dollars more for the Shark Creek renovation compared to uh the Northfield um option. So we would recommend uh that you approve option number three and a small portion of option two as part of our strategic plan number four.
Okay. I know it goes implied, but if somebody puts a motion on the floor to approve, I would like to also have possible language read into the record. It says that the board will have oversight and not only approval of final plan, but also final cost estimates too, so that we are involved and engaged in the whole process. I just think that's important for us to fulfill our responsibilities as trustees.
I was actually gonna ask that question. We should have some kind of language, even that we approve the option overseeing the the build process, you know, whether it's, we want to add some, some things, maybe tweak some things a little bit. We can do that along the way.
The motion approved tonight would be to move forward in this particular direction, correct, as far as getting back with architects and starting to formalize?
Yeah, and so one thing as part of that process that you guys are aware of, it is the, just the timetable of the lease financing uh to be able to pay for this project. And so that timetable was in your board packet. Um, it does take a little bit of time to have that accomplished. We have to have a couple hearings. Um, and then typically would be finished, if we start the hearings sooner, we can be finished with all that project by the end of October, um, which then would allow us to continue to move forward in the next steps with working with architects, with um, or getting an RFP out for construction managers uh to oversee the projects, et cetera. And we know that all takes time based off of when the architects came to the work session, they said, plan for about twelve months uh once we start hitting the ground running before we can really get things out to bid uh and start it. And so uh, we are trying to keep that process flowing and moving uh so that um we can get all the information that we need to move forward with everything. Um, obviously, we won't know the exact cost of anything until the bids actually come through, uh but we would need to have a guideline of what we anticipate or expect to spend uh for this project.
Makes, makes sense. Does, would somebody want to take a stab at wording into the record of motion for all this?
Yeah, I would move to approve option three with partial of option two, with the board having oversight over this whole project. So we can, you know, make sure financially and, and everything that we want it to be.
Yeah, this is all right. All right. If it's the motion Scott just made, do I have a second on that? All in favor of approving then option three to move forward with money also being spent on option two to facilitate a better situation with the cafeteria? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say.
Say aye.
All right, Carrie's five vote.
All right, thank you.
No unfinished business or board comments, any public comments this evening from the public?
I want to thank you guys for your time and effort you've put into it and making it public work sessions that we can come here and hear all the ideas. I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Anything from the board, any items? If not, it will be adjourned.